I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission. Tonight is Wednesday, April 3, 2019. All commissioners are present and accounted for, and we have a new commissioner. Well, maybe we'll get to that later in the meeting, but welcome Carson Kur up here. Carson, it's great to have you with us. It's now time in the meeting for any non-agenda public comments, so comments not having to do with anything with regards to what we'll be talking about tonight. Okay? And please state your name for the record, and please hold your comments to three minutes.
This does have to do with what you're talking about tonight, but I need to leave, so I'm asking if I could just go ahead and present it now.
That sounds fine. We'll go ahead with that.
Sorry, I cannot make them to you, but I'll sit and sit. Anne Agard, 16524 104th Avenue Northeast in Bothell. These comments relate to the Critical Areas Ordinance that you will be discussing in a few minutes, and in particular, they relate to the changes to the compensatory mitigation that you'll be -- that's in your pocket that you'll be considering. And I'm asking that you should -- that I'm emphasizing that this should be consistent with the compensatory mitigation changes that will be considered next Monday by the Shoreline Board in the Shoreline jurisdiction, and that they be considered as system-wide. So I ask that you table this consideration on the compensatory mitigation this evening and wait until you see the Shoreline Board recommendations. Our meeting is the -- and I am speaking as an individual, not as a board member. The board meeting will be the 8th of April, and you have another hearing scheduled for the 16th. And the reason I'm asking this is that the update that is described on Page 4 of the staff report is reported as minor, and its staff is saying that this is a less stringent approach outside of jurisdiction where there are more instances of low-quality wetlands that might be considered for in lieu fee program. I disagree with the staff recommendation that a less stringent approach of any sort is appropriate. The city should make every effort for consistency between the Critical Areas Ordinance regulations throughout the city, whether in or out of Shoreline jurisdiction. And it's not possible to make this decision if you don't know what the Shoreline Board is going to recommend anyway. And in addition, this amendment applies both to the criteria for utilizing mitigation banks as well as fee-in-lieu programs. I'm stressing this because critical areas should be protected on a system-wide scale that recognizes the integral critical continuity between stream flows, wetlands, groundwater, riparian areas, floodplains, wildlife and water quality throughout the city, not only in the riparian areas. And though the streams under the Shoreline Master Program jurisdiction, which are the Sammamish River and North Creek, and also could be at some point Swamp Creek, do have in terms of area a very high importance in terms of water quality and habitat, but they are intimately, as obviously, connected to what is going outside the Shoreline jurisdiction. So for example, we have a very, very serious problem in the Sammamish River. There are lethal temperatures in the summer in the Sammamish that prevent the migration of the Chinook salmon. This is well-known, it's documented, it's in the Wira-8 Chinook Recovery Plan, and we have to do something about it. It is critical. So if a wetland that is providing cool water to the Sammamish, to a stream that flows into the Sammamish, in any way exacerbates this problem, then it is critical that it not be done. So I am -- it's also the staff has suggested that Shoreline, outside of Shoreline jurisdiction, there may be lower-quality wetlands that might be candidates. They might be a candidate, but that doesn't mean that they're not important in terms of the water quality in the mainstream. So please consider the amended language after the Shoreline Board proposal is before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Agard. Do any of the commissioners have any question for Ms. Agard? Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you for coming out tonight.
Okay, and then here's your comment.
And for giving us this information. Looks like there's one other person in the audience. Okay, no additional non-agenda or public comments, non-agenda. And with that, we don't have any minutes to approve tonight, and no new business. And with that, we'll just go ahead and open up the Critical Area Regulations Amendments Public Hearing. And we're joined tonight by Dave Boyd, Senior Planner of the City of Bothell, and Michael Kaderman, who is the Director of Community and Economic Development.
Thank you. And I do want to just note that Ms. Agard's comments will be part of the public record, even though they were done as part of the non-agenda public comments with regard to the Critical Areas Regulations Amendments. Bear with me just for a second here. I just have a very short and somewhat boring presentation. I didn't include any illustrations, as I prefer to do, but just wanted to highlight and kind of direct the discussion a bit tonight. Council initiated three items for consideration. First, align to make amendments to align with the Federal Emergency Management Agency or FEMA guidelines regarding floodplain management. Second, to adopt the latest version of the Department of Ecology Wetlands Rating System. And third, to clarify regulations concerning fish and wildlife habitat or stream, primarily streams, within the Critical Areas Regulations. On the first item, aligning with floodplain management guidelines, we are still awaiting updated FEMA guidelines. The guidelines that spurred this amendment actually date back to 2012, and they've asked us to give them some time to review those and along with our code and provide updated guidance. We've also contacted Ecology's floodplain management staff, and they also had submitted some suggestion, suggested amendments, some of which we've included, incorporated, but they also say that they're updating their guidance, and that update is due late this year. So we propose deferring those amendments to 2020, and as you'll see soon, along with other proposed amendments for 2020. Oops. Well. I'm afraid that I don't have my full presentation, so I'm going to go back to the table here. With regard to the second item here, the updates regarding the Ecology's Wetlands Rating System, those have been made, and at the study session, we talked about two options. We could adopt Ecology's Model Code that incorporates the new wetland habitat rating system, or we could modify our current wetland buffer table using the updated habitat rating system. What's in your packet is the latter, and we have forwarded this to Ecology for comment, and they've commented that the buffers in their model code are significantly larger. 225 feet is the standard for Category 1 through 3 wetlands, and they are even a little smaller than ours for Category 4 wetlands. And they also pointed out that the justification for our buffers that were adopted in 2005, that there are references to literature that was used to justify those buffers at that time, that those are outdated and no longer supported by best available science. That leaves us in the position of needing to move forward with these amendments to update the new wetland rating system, but not having the resources to do a full best available science analysis of those buffers and update those. So on that item, we are also suggesting that we make the modest changes that are included in your packet now and defer that more extensive review of the wetland buffers to 2020 when we can go back to council and try to get funding sufficient to do that properly. The other option, which would be to just adopt the Model Code, would be a significant, have a significant impact on our development capacity. And Ecology recognizes that many, that the guidelines, their model code was not necessarily made for a relatively urbanized city like Bothell, but that we would need to do more work to justify that on a long-term basis. So that's our proposal on the updates for the wetlands rating system, which are related to those buffers. And then the third item in the initiation was to clarify regulations concerning fish and wildlife habitat, which in our case is really largely focused on streams within the Critical Areas Regulations. And in the February 27 packet in the Agenda Bill, I noted a very simple change would be just to simply add to the title of that section, Fish and Wildlife Habitat Areas, Including Streams and Their Buffers, so that a layperson who may not realize that streams are incorporated within that category would see that. Because oftentimes, when we're helping customers at the counter and they're wondering what their stream buffer would be or what the regulations for that are, it's really not readily apparent as they go through the code and the title table of contents for that section where to look. And it is a long section of code. There's over 200 pages, so we think that simple change would just help make it a little bit easier to navigate. I didn't include that code amendment in tonight's package, but it's a fairly simple one that was brought up at the study session and could be incorporated in the April 17 packet. I will make one response to Ms. Agard's comments. The thinking wasn't that the language is less stringent necessarily, as in the Shorelines Code, although it was a recognition that within the Shorelines jurisdiction, there are not likely any low-grade wetlands that would be good candidates for off-site mitigation. Outside of the Shorelines jurisdiction, I think we will find, we do find a number of relatively low-rated wetlands where off-site mitigation may in fact be a reasonable option. And that off-site mitigation would still be controlled by the hierarchy that says, first, if you can't find a way to mitigate onsite, look at adjacent sites. If there's not a feasible option on adjacent sites, look within the jurisdiction. And then, if that's not feasible, then the options like using existing programs like the King County Fee-in-Lieu of, or the only existing wetland mitigation bank within that we're in the service area for, which is east of Woodenville, then those would become options if none of the higher priority options are reasonable. So, and in fact, it could be that off-site mitigation for a low-performing, low-rated wetland outside of the Shoreline jurisdiction could in fact go towards enhanced mitigation within the Shoreline jurisdiction and get a bigger bang for the buck than we might on an off-site site. So that was the thinking behind going with what the modest amendment that was originally proposed to Shoreline Board, and that they chose not to go that direction because they felt strongly that we should be doing that, especially in the Shoreline jurisdiction, doing that mitigation onsite. So with that, I would, the basic itinerary tonight, the next steps would be to take any additional public comment, and then go into deliberation. I've got the packet up, so we could do page-by-page review of the amendments, proposed amendments. And then, we didn't come tonight expecting you to make a recommendation. We didn't bring draft planning commission findings. So any feedback that we can get from you tonight on the proposed regulations and any direction on findings that you'd like to see included, we can bring that back on April 17. Also, and if the commission does want to take a look at the draft regulations that Shoreline Board is considering, I can certainly provide those.
And commissioners have any questions for the presentation? Commissioner Carronan?
So the city is waiting on updates from both Ecology and FEMA. I'm going to have a couple of questions along these lines. Is there a forecast of when you'll get that? I see late 19.
That's Ecology's forecast. FEMA hasn't given us a firm date, but I expect to get those comments back sooner than that.
Okay. So it appears as if there'll be some significant staff work and also additional consultant work required to accommodate those changes and update the code, correct?
The consultant work is more from, based on the feedback we've gotten from Ecology, not from the floodplain staff, but from the general Critical Area staff at Ecology on our --
The best available science comment?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's going to require some consultant resources, so correct?
Yes.
I'm, probably should be, but I'm not familiar with the timing of the city's budget process. Are you going to be able to get a sense of your consultant needs and develop a budget in time to get a request in and have those resources available next year?
So the budget was adopted by the council in November of 2018. It's a two-year budget. So technically, we're already in that
Okay.
To that biennial budget cycle. So this would require us to go back to council and request an amendment to the budget in order to have those funds available. And that's one of the things we'll talk to the council about when we take these amendments to them. We'll explain the same thing to them as Dave did to you this evening about sort of the conundrum that we find ourselves in, and seek some direction at that time and how they'd like us to proceed.
Is there a timing for these budget amendments? Can they happen anytime during the cycle, or are there particular times when they're more favorably viewed?
That's a great question, and I haven't, this is the first cycle I've been through here. I know that there are amendments that they do. I think they do them at the end of the first year, is my understanding.
Okay. So that would be the end of this year?
Correct. And in all practical, for all practical purposes, you know, we probably wouldn't be able to start on anything before then anyway because of everything else we have in the work program right now, unless the council tells us they want to shift some things in the work program.
Now, I wouldn't, well, given the timing and the feedback from the agencies, I wouldn't expect you'd get started before next year either. My concern would be if you miss a budget window, that could add more time to the process while you're waiting for the resources necessary.
Possibly. I think in this case, we would have the information we need. If the direction from the council is to go ahead and do this or propose a budget amendment, that we would have time to do that before the end of the year, and then theoretically begin that next year if that's the direction from the council. I think the other consideration, and this is getting a little further into the weeds than we probably need to, but when we do a best available science work, it's really about more than just the wetlands. So it would really be, if we wanted to do it well and do it right, we would do a best available science for all of our critical areas at the same time. And we're going to be need, we're going to need to do that in a few years anyway as part of our comprehensive plan and then subsequent code updates. So that's the other factor that we're going to be considering in this.
But the city will likely find itself making a choice between adopting wider buffers based on Ecology's guidance, which would have an impact on developability and economic impact, as you indicate, or move forward with these technical analyses, which would justify a different buffer to be included in the code.
Or we go with the buffers we have for now, understanding we would do the best available science and update those buffers at a later time. Because it, as you just pointed out, there are significant capacity, we think, implications for that, but we haven't done that analysis, and that's the type of analysis we would do as part of our next comprehensive plan update. That's not due until 2023.
And there's not a concern from Ecology's standpoint, holding off on these amendments that amount of time?
I guess I would say that the feedback from them is that, well, one, unlike the Shoreline Master Program, Ecology's approval is not required to move forward on that. So cities have varied from Ecology's guidance as, and I didn't mention this, but the packet included some examples from neighboring jurisdictions. Kirkland, which essentially follows the Ecology guideline, and Kenmore, which is proposing buffers similar to ours, a little bit larger. So Ecology recognized that on this, in this instance, their role is advisory. They don't have an approval function, but I'm sure they would prefer that we had resources to do a more thorough review at this time, but I think they understand that that's not, that we'll need some time to do that kind of analysis.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? I guess I just, with that, I just, that gives me a little bit of concern to wait that long when I hear 2023 to update it, because it seems like earlier on, we stated that we're below best available science right now on something like the Critical Areas. And I guess it's, because I know, I think the citizens of Bothell have pretty much, they, and then just within the last three years, they've preserved some large open spaces, and I think there's a strong desire here to retain that part of the natural environment. So I guess I'd just make that comment. But I also know that it's going to be a lot of staff time, and you don't have more staff time yet, you know, you've already booked. So I appreciate what you brought us, and thanks for keeping us up to date on, you know, why we can't and cannot do it before a certain date.
And I appreciate that comment, and let me clarify my statement. I hope I didn't state that that's a recommendation or suggestion that we wait until 2023. That's just another consideration for us, is that's when we would be gearing up to do a lot of the work that's included in this. So we have to, we have to consider that in the context of everything else that's coming up due. The comp plan update is due in June of '23. We would start that effort probably two years ahead of that in order to get everything done. So it might be that we do the best available science while we're doing the comp plan update to help inform that. It's just, it's just one more piece of the puzzle that we have to, we have to consider when we're looking at when we would do this, what the cost would be, and how that fits in with the rest of our work program. I just want to be clear, I'm not
Okay.
Suggesting that or advocating that we wait until
The same consideration.
Because I also have a concern about the date of our last best available science. I didn't realize it was that long ago.
Okay. Thanks, Michael.
I just wanted to also state that it's, I could argue that it's yet to be determined whether our current buffers are below what is supported by best available science. They were supported by best available science the last time we did that analysis, and they may be yet, but there would be work to be done to make that case.
And so does that work with the, is that done in tandem with Ecology, with a lot of input from Ecology? You guys work pretty closely to the city on that?
Well, we've been, we've been providing Ecology with our drafts and getting their comments back. And then if we were to do full best available science review, I'm sure the consultants would also be working with Ecology on that. Not only the Ecology, I would probably bring in some consultations with fish and wildlife as well with regard to habitat corridors, as well as FEMA.
All right, great. And any commissioners, you know, chime in anytime, raise your hand anytime. I'll try to do my best to look both ways. It's always kind of hard to like do this, but I'm trying to ignore anybody. With that, I guess it's a good time to just kind of maybe discuss, discuss what you brought us and kind of go through it, and then we'll kind of go with the bullet points that you need with regards to guidance for continuing the meeting.
And I don't know.
Oh, yeah. And yeah, well, I'll just give the availability. This is a time for any public comment on, after the staff report, and it looks like there is none, but thank you, Commissioner Hampton, appreciate it. So now, Dave, can you, can you bring up, would this be the, would this be the best slide of the synopsis of the guidance for all the, what you're looking for from the commission tonight with regards to guidance on things that we need to address at the next meeting?
Yeah, I'm afraid that I left that file
Okay.
On my computer, so I'm not able to open the
Okay, no problem.
The updated version that I was hoping to show, but
Okay.
So what I would suggest, and my original plan was just to go, go straight to the amendments, and we can walk through those. I think it would be useful for me to understand if there are any concerns about any of these amendments or questions about any of these amendments that we can address on April 17. And then, having done that, get feedback about any additional information that you would need on the 17th.
Okay, great. I don't know if the commissioner needs to go through, are there any questions with regards to the memorandum? And you all have any questions with regards to anything that's on the pages in the memorandum? Or if you don't, well, we can go ahead and skip straight ahead to the Critical Area Code Amendments. amendments. Okay, we can, we can, we could come back to if we need to, but let's go ahead and then start with the page one of the potential critical area code amendments. And go ahead and just talk in the microphone if you can, if you're, if you have any questions with regards to anything on page one. Commissioner.
I have a question about the definition for basement. Daylight basement structures are pretty common here in Bothell, and they consist of subgrade, below-ground level construction on less than all four sides.
Right.
So does this definition restrict that?
I, I think this would not include a daylight basement that, that wasn't below ground on, on, on all sides. You might still have a, you could call, consider a daylight basement that would have, be, you know, sill height below and below, below ground on all sides. But this is a definition from ecology's floodplain staff that they've recommended that we use. I could try to get some more background on, on why they've, they've chosen this definition, but it's straight from them.
Fair enough.
Thanks. Just a little question. Does anybody else have anything regards to anything on page one? Okay, with that, we'll go to page two then.
Recognizing that it states the amendment matches the WAC definition, I'm looking at the definition of wetland, and I'm a little troubled by the last sentence, that wetlands may include artificial wetlands intentionally created to mitigate conversion of wetlands. Well, it, it seems to me if you're creating a wetland, then it should be under the definition of a wetland. And he, and, and again, I see that it's their definition, not the city's, but any insight on that one?
Well, I think that's what that does. It says that if, if you create an artificial wetland as part of a off-site mitigation action, then that is in fact a wetland.
I'm, I'm reacting to may versus shall. It says may.
Ah. Well, the one very firm piece of guidance from ecology is that, that we need to use their, the WAC definition for wetlands. So I can, I can bounce that question off of ecology and find out why, why it's worded that way and what, what might be a condition where they wouldn't consider an artificial wetland, a wetland.
Yeah, it just seems to me.
I don't know the answer.
It can be read, I think, either way. It's, the way that it's written, it's sort of an aside that it also may include these, but you're right. I think it's not necessarily clear that that, it makes it sound like it may be an option as well.
Yeah.
And if the, the direction from the commission is, if you want that to say wetlands include and just strike the word may, that's something we can.
Yeah, strike may or change may to shall. It just seems like at best, it's setting up confusion.
Yeah.
And at worst, it's putting loophole in, somebody's doing something that can be later undone.
But if the, the direction from the commission is for the clear language to be that it shall include those, I, I want to get some, some guidance from the commission. I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Okay.
You know, and if you prefer it to be optional, that's okay, too. We just need to know. And then Dave can follow up with ecology and get some clarification on that, and we can propose a change.
I'll speak for myself. I think it should be shall and listen to what the other, my fellow commissioners may have to say.
Does anybody else have any, anything to comment on that?
I guess I'm good either way. The only downside I see is if an artificial wetland doesn't meet a lot of the objectives of a natural wetland, just applying that across the board, I don't know, maybe it has an unintended consequence. So I'm okay as is, but I'd, I'd support shall if everyone else agrees with it.
I, I would welcome a response from ecology, and I don't know if they can get back to us before the mid-April meeting.
I, I think they can.
But if so, then maybe we could table this until then. But I, I agree that it is confusing.
I think that, unless anybody else has any comments, I think, I think Commissioner Hampton summed it up the best. Let's just, if you can, reach out to them and bring us back information with regards to may, shall, or without the word and what their recommendation might be. So thanks for that, catching that language. That's important language.
At the very least, we can find out what their intent was with that, and then we can suggest some clarification.
Thank you.
Looking at the, the sentence before that, it, it does specify what wetlands, artificial wetlands do not include. So there are certain kinds of art, what might be considered artificial wetlands that, that are excluded from this definition. So I, I think the, the wording on that last sentence is probably intended to say that, that there are, that there are some kinds of, of artificial wetlands that can be included. So anyway, I will get clarification from ecology on that.
Thanks, Dave. If anybody has any questions with regards to anything else on page two? Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to page three.
So I, I do have a question about the rating scale, and, and it goes back to page three of the memo as well. There's this one to nine scale, it looks like, and then there's the zero to 27, and it looks like we used to use a scale of zero to 100. Can you cover what we're, what we're aiming for here and what changes are proposed? Because I'm seeing 27 out of 100 here, 22 corrected from 69, but on page three, we're looking at changes from the 20s to the six.
Yes, so the, the 20-point scale is, is the overall wetland scale. The, the zero to nine point scale is the habitat score for wetlands. And that's the, it's the habitat score that, well, that, that's the, the prime one that we're addressing in these, these amendments, but, but the overall score also has, has been modified.
So is the 100-point scale that was previously in the code, is that overall wetland or is that our old version of the habitat score?
That's the overall score.
Okay. And did you say zero to 20 or zero to 27?
This is out of 27.
Okay, 27, okay. So the only one we're proposing to change is the overall habitat score, and we're already on board with the, or sorry, the overall wetland score and the habitat score for wetlands is zero to nine, and we're just going to adopt that based on ecology's recommendation? Or is that what we've always been using?
Well, we're, we're using ecology's recommendation for the overall score and making, making the changes there. We're also using the habitats score, the new habitat score. The, the issue is with the buffer widths that are associated with those different, combining the, the, the overall score and the habitat score. Basically, probably a clearer way to state it is that the, the, what we're calling the overall score, the, the 20, now 27-point score, previously to 100-point score, up to 100% points score defines the category. And then the habitat rating combined with the category determines the, the buffer width.
All right, I got it. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions with regards to the rating categories? Okay.
Sorry, one more.
Yeah.
We, we don't have any category ones. Did I read that later here? And, and in the city of Bothell, we don't have any category one wetlands?
No, we do. The wetlands around North Creek, up around Centennial Park are considered category one. I believe also the wetlands on the, the restored wetlands on the, on the campus are, are considered category one wetlands now. I'm not 100% positive on that, but I, those are the two that I've heard cited to date.
It's interesting, sorry. Go ahead. Oh, it's just interesting that the restored wetlands that are, what, 14, 15 years old at UW-Bothell could be category one when by definition, that's a wetland that can't be restored within our lifetime? Just.
So take, take that, I'll, I'll confirm that, but, and, and I don't want to say that there are no others besides those, but those are the, the ones that have, have been mentioned when we've talked about category one wetlands.
Thanks.
Yeah, Dave, that'd be great. If you could bring back just like any category ones, like a list of those, that'd be great.
So there is one challenge in doing that. We, we don't, we used to map both streams and wetlands by category and have that on our, our maps. We have gotten away from that because it is important when a development proposal comes in that they be evaluated at that time. So it's, we really determine the category based on the applicant's wetland study or, or stream study, reconnaissance study. And then often we will double-check that with a third-party reviewer that we have on, on retainer. So we don't really have a, a map that shows where all of the different category wetlands are, but I could do, I'll do some research and determine which ones have been recently identified as category one wetlands.
Okay, and to be clear to maybe Commissioner Hampton's point that he alluded to, so if they say, because we're, now we're reviewing, we don't have a list because we're reviewing them when they go with, before a development proposal and they do a wetland study. So when, when the professional's out there doing that, if the, the wetland has been filled in or altered so much, I mean, so how does that, so you don't look back historically at, at its significance? Even though, so if it was disturbed, because it seems like it would, there would need to be some remediation or something like that with regards to kind of recovering that somewhat, but do you happen to know? I'm trying to, I'm not very familiar with it.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to get back to you on that. But they are, I mean, a, a professional would be able to determine whether, whether there had been degradation to a wetland and, and account for that in, in their analysis.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Okay, we'll go ahead and move ahead to page four then.
My question was on the, I guess, third paragraph down, the amendment below per ecology review. So the federal wetland delineation manual is now being used instead of a state identification manual. Does that state identification manual still exist or is kind of everyone moving to the federal review for identifying their wetlands?
The, the federal manual is, is the, the baseline, and then there is a state or a regional supplement to that. So I believe in the state, there's a Western Washington and then an Eastern Washington supplement that would be used.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
I was looking for this, and it kind of, it's on this page, but it goes to the previous page. We were talking about rating wetlands. On the bottom of page three and to the top of page four, it does say the wetland shall be applied as the wetland exists at the date of the adoption of the rating system as it naturally changes thereafter. So it, that to me means it's not necessarily as it is today if there have been modifications made that were not properly permitted.
And that, and that's part of that, the, the wetland, the consultant's work is to determine what that, that would be, might be.
And by, by reference to the date of adoption of the rating system, will that date then be reset to the date that these changes are adopted?
Yes. And just a, as you look at the code, at the end of each section, there's a list of ordinances and dates, and, and so you go back to, to that ordinance to determine what the, what the, what the rating system was prior.
So if a property were to have been modified in a way that would change its rating, but that wasn't detected until after the adoption of this, is that kind of a get out of jail free card? Is it grandfathered in?
Well, keep in mind that our wetlands regulations have been in place for over 25 years. So a lot of the development that's occurred during that time has been under a critical areas ordinance specific to wetlands. The standards have changed, the requirements have changed, but any illegal modifications during that time would be subject to whatever the standards were at the time they come in for any new development. Where we have modifications or degradations that have occurred prior to that, that's part of the analysis that Dave was referring to if they come in with a development proposal. And I'll, I'll give you an example. I don't think it's a wetland. I think it's actually a stream restoration on the Urbane Village Two, the country village property. So they are, as part of that development, they're having to restore the, the portion of the stream that runs through that property. And I'm, I'm trying to remember now if there are wetlands associated with that. If so, then that would be something that would be required as well. I don't know if that helps at all, but there's, there's some real-life examples that we have of that.
Sure. I'm, I'm just struggling with the language that the rating category shall be applied as the wetland exists on the date of the adoption of the rating system. And there'll be a new date of adoption coming sometime soon, and does that reset things?
Oh, okay. No, I don't think so. It's, it's whatever comes in after we adopt.
So if I understand your question, it does reset it. So anything that comes in after, after we adopt it would, would need to comply with those new ratings. I, as I, I was reading through that whole section a little bit as, as you were discussing, and so if there had been a previous filling of a wetland on a site that was coming in for, for redevelopment, if that was done and, and was done under permit and was allowed at the time it was done, then that's handled differently than anything that, any changes that were made through illegal modifications.
So let's say that we have a category three wetland that came in, got wetland approval as part of their development proposal. At the time, the, the wetland categorization system made that a category three. And if we reset the classification so that under the new system, that would be a category two, we don't change that. It's still a category three until they come in for something else that affects that wetland, and then it would be under whatever the system is in place. So then it would be classified as a category two.
I, I understand that, and that's reasonable. My question is more to the point, let, let's say property backs up to a, and then over time, they've been kind of pushing back and pushing back and pushing back, inconsistent with then regulations. Is it reset so they're okay based on the new regulations?
No, only if they, only if that work had been done under permit.
Right.
All right, thank you.
And the regulations have tended to get more stringent as opposed to less over time.
My, my concern is if something happened that wasn't caught and then gets caught later, is it under the, is the date reset the date of the regulation?
Yes, I think I understand your question. And like Dave said, I think if it's, if it's something that they were not, that they were doing illegally, then we're going to catch that at some point and it's going doing illegally, then we're going to catch that at some point and it's going to have to get restored to whatever the standards are at the time it's caught.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions with regards to anything else on page four? Okay, we'll move on to page five.
There are no changes on page five, included ample sections for context here.
It's a.
Suggest maybe we can, unless someone has a question about some existing language, maybe we could skip the pages where there are no changes.
Right. Oh, yeah, I, I guess I just had one question. It's not with regards to anything we're changing, but just so I have clarification on like the history with regards to certified professional and then a non-certified professional with, I mean, is there any background with regards to why that, is that kind of standard? Do you think that would be standard language for most cities?
I, I'd have to look into that.
That'd be great. I know it's not some of the changes you're bringing forward, but that would be great. Thanks, Dave. Okay, let's move ahead to page six.
And this is just a, a reference change.
Right. Exactly. Okay. I see what you're, Michael, I see what you're referring to now. And then on page seven. And page eight.
So page eight is, is the, the table that Ecology's review said these buffer widths are not, don't match their, their model code. But we're, we're proposing that we stick with our buffer widths until we have time to do that, that best available science review and, and just make the changes in the habitat score numbers.
Can you remind me, are, are buffers smaller than Ecology recommends or larger than Ecology recommends?
Smaller. The Ecology recommendations, well, if you look at the, in the memo, the Kirkland, Kirkland basically follows the Ecology recommendations.
And then just contextually making sure, so those will come up later this year or early 2020 when we get information back from Ecology?
No, there's two different things. There's the information we're expecting from Ecology later this year and from FEMA, hopefully prior to that, on some of the floodplain related regulations. The, we're not expecting any new guidance from Ecology on the buffer widths, but what we're saying is that to, to really do, we, we really need to do a best available science review of those and we'll need to go back to council, see if council is interested in, in going that direction and whether we can get a budget amendment to, to support that.
I would, just for the record, Dave, I would like to see that, but I recognize I don't have a lot of control over that, so thank you.
And that can certainly be part of the, the commission's findings in, in your recommendation to council.
Anderson. And actually though, I, I would like to get a kind of a, at this point, sorry, maybe start, stop right here if there's, you know, a discussion, but question, well, I guess we should, we can, we can discuss it later. We'll just keep moving through here, but I do want to come back to Commissioner Moro Cook's point with regards to that because I think it's a valid one about what kind of direction we want to suggest to council and the prioritization of how soon we want to see some staff, staff time dedicated towards this. So, because it does seem like there's a big variance between our 2005 and today. Page 10, doesn't look like there are any changes. Page 11, and please stop me if I'm, I'm going too fast, but.
Yeah, and just.
It looks like you do have a.
Changes.
Yes, there is a note there. You want to speak to that?
Oh, so in category one, two, and three wetlands, the Ecology's recommended buffers are, are larger than ours, substantially larger than ours. For category four wetlands, they're actually smaller than ours. So in theory, we could cherry pick and, and go with the smaller buffers for category four, but I think it's more, more consistent to say we're going to stick with our, what we've established previously under our pre, last best of available science review and then do a comprehensive review of all when we're able to do that again.
I'd agree with that approach.
I would as well. Okay. Page 12.
No changes there.
Page 13.
And this is the section that Ms. Agar referred to.
Compensatory mitigation.
Yeah, and actually this is the beginning of that, that entire section and it does include some Ecology suggested changes with regard to references. The, the specific part that Ms. Agar spoke to is on the upcoming pages.
Trying to find her comments, so I mean, her being on the Shoreline Board, I did want, did want to understand it. So can give you a short synopsis again about.
Well, it starts.
How she felt versus what staff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No problem.
Starts at the bottom of page 14.
Okay, let's go to 14.
And, and then carries over onto page 15.
Right. Offsite.
So. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Did I go the wrong way?
While Dave's looking that up, does the, any of the commissioners have any guidance with regards to how you feel about what Shoreline's Board Commissioner Agar said with, with regards to fee and lieu versus mitigation onsite? I was at that meeting, it was kind of interesting, but Commissioner Karen.
Well, I, I would support her, at least her request that we wait until after their meeting and get feedback on what they have found. I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I would agree. If they're studying this one section in particular in greater detail than we're going through it tonight, I'd like to hear what their, their outcome is. We could try to have a uniform decision.
Great. And it looks like that'll be pretty, that'll, that'll be fine anyway because we don't, we don't meet again until after that. Okay. Great.
And we can also bring you a little bit more explanation of how we would see this working because there's some, there's some value to, to staff as we're reviewing these types of projects to have some, some ability to have some flexibility in terms of how we address some of the mitigation issues. And we can talk some more about that at the next meeting.
Like, you know, and I was there at the meeting, they were, I guess, hopefully there's a good, good enough time to bring up this point, but that, you know, while it seems, I don't know, one can make the argument for being, for mitigating at the site, there are things like Wayne Golf Course that, that might be able to use some of the funds to be able to, to mitigate what's happened there over the years. So it'll be interesting to see what they, what they bring to us.
So I will just explain the, the thing, and, and this change was, a change that was suggested by our Shoreline Master Program consultants, our, the wetland and river biologist that's helping with those. And it wasn't required by Ecology for the shoreline update, but it was something that was, Ecology did encourage jurisdictions to make existing wetland banking and fee and lieu programs enable their use because they've spent a lot of, put a lot of time working with King County particularly in establishing a, a mitigation bank that would serve this, this area and the, and King County's fee and lieu program, which need to be federally certified and it's not a trivial thing to do. So our current language says that, that a, a, an applicant, qualified applicant could use a Bothell-sponsored fee and lieu program. Well, Bothell, Bothell does not have a fee and lieu program. That would be, that's, would be a major undertaking for us to develop our own fee and lieu program. So the suggestion to change that to a Bothell-approved fee and lieu program would allow us to administratively determine that a, a project could use the King County fee and lieu program. And then there still are in that section, if you look down below, there, there are quite, you know, several limitations on that. It only can happen if, if it is not feasible to do mitigation onsite or adjacent site or within the, the drainage bay, drainage basin. So, so it's, it's not opening up the, the floodgate, so to speak, but it is still quite limited.
Does Snohomish County also have that banking? Or fee and lieu?
As of now, but they, I believe they are working on some programs. I also have heard that there's work going on to, to establish a site in Kenmore along Swamp Creek that, that could be available also to City of Bothell and, and if we annex, our Snohomish County annexation area, we will have a portion of Swamp Creek within our jurisdiction, so.
So in other words, if there's not one, that means that all mitigation has to be done onsite because there's no option.
Yeah, and right now there are two programs that if, if our code allows it, could be used if, you know, onsite or adjacent site or within the city were not feasible options. And those are the, the King County fee and lieu program and the, the wetland bank in, in unincorporated King County, east of Woodinville.
Page 15. Page 16.
I have a question.
Back to 15, okay.
Page 15.
Commissioner Karen.
Item 3C, the mitigation occurs as part of the City of Bothell-sponsored fee and lieu. Shouldn't that be approved?
Good catch. That should, that should have the same change as above at the top of the page there.
Where was that, where was that on? Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Page 16.
The changes there are straight from Ecology's recommendations.
Are these the, the changes that we're, we're tabling until after the Shoreline Board meets or are these, are these different?
Well, you're not scheduled to, to finalize your recommendations until after Shoreline Board, but there isn't a, a equivalent table in the Shoreline Board Code. The, the main thing had to do with the offsite mitigation issues.
Okay.
Okay, page 17.
So, so comment, I didn't see language addressing potential impacts during construction. Is that handled in the development code or, you know, there are some special circumstances, albeit temporary ones during construction projects which can impact wetlands. Are they sufficiently handled elsewhere or should there be a reference?
I, I think they are, but I'd have to come back to you with exactly, you know, how those are, how those are handled. But I, I don't say, shouldn't say that. I think they are, I know they are, that construction projects are, are required to do, you know, self fencing and, and a number of measures to protect critical areas. So I'll find those references and, and bring them back.
And I guess the question is then, should, should there be a cross-reference in this section directing folks in that, to that location?
Well, so it, there may be in parts of the critical areas regulations that I haven't included because we're not making those changes, but I'll, I'll, I'll research that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes going through recommendations or I should say the, sorry, critical area amendments, proposed code amendments. Have we given you enough guidance there to staff on that or what else do you need from us?
Can I close this?
Yes.
So I, I would like to reiterate something that I believe Commissioner Moro Cook also said. I'm a little concerned about the open-ended, somewhat open-ended nature of the update of the best available science, science portion of it. We are in a time where development pressure is rather strong in the city and a lot can happen between now and 2022, 2023. It, it seems to me that protecting these wetlands sooner rather than later is, is worth some effort and I'd urge the staff to bring that message back to the council to get some resources there and bring these consultants on and do that work.
Would any other commissioners like to?
Thank you.
Give their take on that? I would, I guess, echo what Commissioner Moro Cook and Commissioner Karen said. I, I feel, I think they summarized it well. I'm here, I've seen nodding heads of.
Quick, quick question.
Yes.
If, if a new best available science was sought by a consultant in 2020, would it again have to be done as part of the comprehensive plan update that's due in mid '23 or would that serve the purpose of that?
No, that could be done as a code amendment. Well, I don't foresee that it would require comprehensive plan amendment, so, and if it did, then, you know, council could initiate a code amendment ahead of the, a comprehensive plan amendment ahead of the, the next update. It would have to be part of our, our one annual set of comprehensive plan amendments in that case, but I think, I'm quite sure that it would, it would be just a code amendment.
So I may not have been super clear with my question, but.
Your question, would we have to do it?
Would we have to do it twice?
No.
No? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
The only reason, the only situation where we might have to redo that is if, if the state in the meantime came out with different guidance and, and, but for my discussions with Ecology to date, that's not, I don't think that's anticipated.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. Let's see, I'm trying to think if, was there anything else I missed with regards to any big items we needed to give guidance on there? With regards to just the small, the small change, I mean, I guess that's what we just went through, so are you looking for anything else at this time?
No, but let me just.
Yeah.
Quick recap.
That'd be great.
I did understand that you would like to see what the Shoreline Board is, is recommending with regard to compensatory mitigation, that you, there was a question about the, the basement definition and the artificial wetlands. basement definition and the artificial wetlands issues. I'll, I'll do what research I can in terms of what other category one wetlands we, we may have in the, in the city and also on the construction impacts. And then in terms of drafting, the findings, I will include what I'm hearing from at least four board members today about including in the recommendation that, that we do the best available science review as soon as possible.
Yes. Thank you, Dave.
And I think I had one other one, and maybe I missed this, Dave, when you were going through that, some clarification on the qualified professional certified versus non-certified?
Yes.
And also the direction was to keep the category four buffers for now.
Could you repeat that?
The category four buffers, to keep them as is for now, we would just do all-
Just keep it consistent.
And then fixing the three C on page fifteen. To reflect the-
Yeah.
Did you say that one? I'm sorry.
I didn't, but.
When you make the recommendation to council, can you clarify roughly how it would be worded? Because I think it would be important for us to call out other communities and what their buffer sizes are and why we're asking for this to be reevaluated. I mean, just a rough look at Kirkland's, it's 225, we're at 125. That's a pretty significant difference. It seems like, I mean, if, if we were talking 20 feet here, I don't think it would be a big issue, but that's 100 feet. It's pretty significant on just one line item.
And just another point of reference, Bellevue's is the same as ours is currently. So there's a wide variation among the jurisdictions and we don't know where our best available science will land. Frankly, my, my bigger issue is the, the length of time since we did the last best available science. So it may actually show us that with our ecosystem and habitat systems here that we're close to where we should be on the buffers, but we don't know that until we go through that process.
Thank you.
Okay. Great, and so we don't need to close the public hearing because we're going to be continuing it? Okay. With that, I guess we'll just move right ahead into the study session. And let's see, here we have. So study session on Vision 2050. And it looks like you have a slide up there. Michael, you'd be leading us through this one?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And I should note that I am not with the Pughes County Regional Council, but this is their PowerPoint presentation with a few modifications that, that I have made to reflect some, some things that are specific to Bothell. So I'm going to run through this. If you have questions as I'm going through it, please stop and ask, otherwise I'm probably not going to go through everything in great detail. But the main reason for this presentation, this briefing tonight, and I'm doing a similar one with city council next Tuesday night, is we're in the comment period right now for the draft supplemental EIS that they're doing for the Vision 2050, which is an update of Vision 2040. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what the differences are that, that we're looking at this time. So we want to put together a comment letter. We're still in the process of reviewing the draft supplemental EIS and seeing what comments we might want to make as a city. There are other cities and other jurisdictions, other organizations that are also going to be commenting on this. We're going to tracking what some of them are doing. But we also wanted to bring this to the planning commission for a couple of reasons. One is if you have particular comments that you want us to carry forward to the council as suggested content for that letter, we would do that, as well as the fact that what ultimately gets adopted in Vision 2050 has significant implications for our next comprehensive plan update. So this is one of several things that are going to be happening over the next few years that will affect what we do in our next update. So with that said, with that said, I may have to go up to the podium. Is it, oh, maybe it's not on. It is not on. Ah-ha. Got to love technology. One of these days I may figure it out. So this is talking about where we're going from Vision 2040, which was adopted in 2008. It is for the four county regions, so we're talking about King, Kitsap, Pierce, and Snohomish Counties. That's the four county area that's included in the Pughes County Regional Council. The basic tenets of Vision 2040 had to do with a strong economy and healthy environment, preservation of waters, farms, recreation, resource lands, urban growth area and center strategy. This was really the introduction of the, the urban centers, the, the different metropolitan centers, core cities, that typology that was put into the plan. And then local actions to achieve the regional vision. And this is important because it's setting those parameters for us as we move forward. This is, as I said, one of several actions. We're also going to have new growth targets. Vision 2050 update will result in new countywide planning policies for both King and Snohomish Counties that we will then have to look at and incorporate into our comp plan update as well. So this is their work program. So we're in 2019 right now in the CEPA review, and they're currently working on revisions to the policies, some draft policy changes that's going through their, their process, which includes the regional staff committee that I sit on, as well as the elected group, which is the Growth Management Policy Board. So they're ultimately the group that will make the recommendation to the executive board at PSRC, as well as the general assembly. So this would be voted on by the general assembly at their annual meeting, which is all the members of jurisdictions of PSRC. So you can see they have scheduled adoption for 2020, and that would be at their general assembly meeting, which is usually in May or maybe early June. This is probably, the, the next couple of slides are some of the most important in terms of what the implications are for Bothell. So they are projecting that by 2050, we will add 1.8 million more people to this four county region. We'll add 1.2 million more jobs to that region. So we have to be able to accommodate that within our, our existing urban growth area. We're not assuming any expansion of that at this point. That may ultimately come out of some work that the counties do. Snohomish County, for example, right now is looking at an expansion of the southwest urban growth area, which is a pretty large area east of Bothell, surrounding the Maltby area and Clearview and that area. But to put it in perspective, 1.8 million people is the equivalent of the size of Bothell today 40 times over. So adding 40 more cities with the population of Bothell between now and 2050, it's a lot of people. And we've got to figure out where we're going to put them all. And then I also mentioned the 1.2 million more jobs. So you can see the growth, and this is, is pretty much a, a straight line projection, but you can see it's representative of what we have been experiencing for the last 20 years or so. Likewise, with the population, if we go back to this, you can see the trend line is really not dramatically different from what we've been experiencing. We're actually ahead of where we were projected to be in Vision 2040. They were originally projecting we would be at about 5 million people in 2040, and now they're projecting probably about 5.3 million in 2040. So they've already increased that to reflect what we've been experiencing. So who will be living here? How is our population going to change? So a few things that stand out as they do the analysis of this, and these are looking at demographic changes that include just the aging of the population, as well as immigration and socioeconomic changes. We're talking about 18% of the region's population will be over the age of 65 by 2050. Personally, I'm going to be well over the age of 65 by 2050, but that shows that that age, that age cohort is going to continue to be a significant portion of the population and, and an increase from 14% of, of what it is today. We're going to be more diverse. 81% of our population growth over the last 16 years since 2000 has been people of color. And that's expected to, to continue, not necessarily at that, that same ratio, but we're going to continue to see more diversity in terms of ethnicity and race and, and those demographic groups. Also smaller households, this is a trend that's actually been happening now for the last several decades. We've seen this since probably about the 1990 census. Household sizes have been decreasing, and that's expected to continue. So that has an, an important implication for our housing numbers when we look at that. So if we're not housing as many people in each unit, that means we're going to need more units to house those people. I should also mention, one of the things that'll come up a little bit later on, income diversity overall is expected to, to decrease among the different alternatives that they're looking at. In other words, we're going to see more of a concentration of wealth in certain areas and more of a concentration of lower income in other areas. I was in a meeting the other day that had a graphic showing the, the change in income levels and where they were, they were moving to. And if we do nothing different by 2050, there will be a very clear line that runs through the south part of King County with the upper income groups living north of that and the lower income groups living south of that, just in terms of housing affordability. So there could be a dramatic shift if, if something isn't done about that. So in terms of the overall process, you can see the different steps. Right now, we're in the draft EIS comment period that runs through April 29th, so we have to get our comments in by then. The, the board will select a preferred alternative of the three, or maybe some hybrid of those sometime later this spring. I think they're currently projecting to do that in early June. That will then be the basis for them revising and coming out with a draft plan that'll come out later in the summer, and then we'll have an opportunity to comment on that as well. From that, they'll issue the final and then go on to adoption in spring.
Comments to you, Michael?
April 29th.
What's April 20?
April 29th. So when they did the scoping for the EIS, they went out and asked people, what are the things that are important to you? What are the things that we need to look at and analyze as we look at these different alternatives? Housing plan affordability was obviously a very big concern. That's not a surprise, that, that what the growth strategies that are adopted ultimately be achievable and also reflects some trends, that they're not just visionary, but actually based somewhat in what we've been experiencing. Climate, jobs, equity, and health. Climate, equity, and health are fairly new to the, the discussion as far as vision. There was some discussion of health in the 2040 plan, but this one, and a little bit of climate, but there's much more focus this time on, on those items. Revisit the role of the urban unincorporated areas, and you'll see this come up in the alternatives, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get there. And then just on implementation, accountability and incentives to implement and local flexibility. This, really, those are some basic tenets of the Growth Management Act. It was designed to be more of a bottoms-up approach to planning, not a top-down. And that's something that they heard through this process to make sure that this doesn't just become a top-down approach to, these are the things that, it's, it's more about, these are the outcomes that we're trying to achieve, and then at the local level, we have some flexibility in how we achieve those things. So the three alternatives that are being considered in the, the draft supplement are the stay the course, which is pretty much a, we'll just continue what we have in 2040, where the focus is really on those metropolitan and core cities. Does everybody know about the typology in Vision 2040? Metropolitan cities, core cities, large cities, smaller cities and towns, and then urban unincorporated and rural?
You might just revisit, this Bothell is a-
Bothell's a core city.
Okay.
We're a core city in both King and Snohomish Counties. And that is due to our population, as well as the fact that we have a regional growth center within Bothell. So if you have a regional growth center, you automatically are a core city. And that's the second highest category. And those are the two categories, as you can see in Vision 2040, that are intended to take a significant share of the, of the regional growth, both in terms of population and jobs. Second alternative is a transit-focused growth, and that's recognizing the, the multi-billion dollar investment that the region has been making over the last several years in light rail and bus rapid transit and other improvements to, you know, the ferry system, the, the foot ferries, those types of things, and focusing more of the growth around those, those services and those stations for what are, what are deemed high-capacity transit or HCT. That's, so that's a second alternative. Then a third, and this is sort of at the behest of areas outside of Seattle and King County, is to look at dispersing the growth a little bit more to some of those other counties and cities that have not experienced the same amount of growth that, that we have in the King County and Seattle portion of it. So that, you'll see when we look at some of the numbers, how that shifts things around a little bit. And they're calling that the reset urban growth. So it still has the, the focus of the other two, but to a lesser degree. So the stay the course, compact growth, metropolitan core cities, as I said, no change is really there. The five metropolitan cities are Seattle, Bellevue, Everett, Bremerton, and Tacoma. And as I said, Bothell is a core city, and those are really the, where the growth is going less in the urban unincorporated. So that's areas that are within the urban growth area, but they're not currently part of a city. And we have some significant areas in Snohomish County that fall within that category. And you can see on the map, sort of, it's not the best map, but I'll toggle back and forth, and you can see some of the changes. So you look at the population densities here, and you can see the, the darker colors, the blues especially, where those are focused right now under the Vision 2040 plan. The transit-focused growth, I'm going to toggle back and forth here a little bit. You can see there's less of the, the yellow and orange and much more of the blue, and they're really focused around those high-capacity transit stations in the region, primarily light rail, but not just light rail. The goal is for 75% of the growth in the region to be near those high-capacity transit stations. So you can see that's substantial. Less in the rural and unincorporated areas that don't have high-capacity transit, and rural areas do not have any high-capacity transit and, under the, the current plans. There are some areas in the urban unincorporated area, however, including two stations in Snohomish County that are in the urban unincorporated area. So that's one of the reasons that this is more of a transit-focused. It doesn't care so much about the designation of metropolitan or core city. It's really where those stations are located. Coincidentally, most of them are located in those metropolitan core cities, but this recognizes that they also happen outside of those and that we should be focusing growth there as well.
So that, that alternative would drive more density?
Correct.
High-rise?
High-rise, mid-rise, really depending on where the density is occurring. You know, we wouldn't necessarily see high-rise in Bothell. We, we don't know that yet, but just my, my presumption is at this point that we might see more mid-rise, you know, some more areas that have a little bit higher density than they do now. We don't know yet what our, what our capacity needs are going to be, so these numbers have not been allocated to individual jurisdictions yet. That's, that comes later in the process.
But to fit the same amount of growth in a smaller area, you have more density?
Yes, you do. Yes, absolutely. 2040 already calls for that. This would intensify that even more. That's correct. The reset urban growth, and again, I'm going to toggle back and forth here. If you take a look at the amount of yellow and the light orange and how more dispersed that is, particularly as you go north and south in the I-5 corridor to what the 2040 shows, you can see that there is more dispersal of that. Also, some of the high-capacity transit, but again, the focus is not as much on those as it is in the second alternative. Not to say there isn't a focus on it, just not to the same degree. So this table summarizes where the population growth would go. That's that middle row. And you can see under the stay the course, about 35% and 28% respectively going to metropolitan and core cities. That goes up. Under the transit-focused growth alternative, a little bit, it goes down significantly or measurably, I should say, on the third alternative and resetting urban growth. And you see more going to the urban unincorporated area, quite a bit more going to urban unincorporated, and a little bit more to rural than what we have in the other two. You'll notice rural is only 2% under the transit-focused growth. The employment, very similar changes in the percentages there, you'll notice. So the main, one of the main differences between this and the 2040 typology of the metropolitan core cities is it adds that HCT or high-capacity transit communities. So it's, it's recognizing those as a separate place, if you will. What does that look like in Snohomish County? These are some preliminary numbers that the county has been putting together. This isn't necessarily how it would end up being distributed, but each county will have some input into, into these percentages, but more so in the growth targets that we get from the Office of Financial Management. Those are the ones that they work with the cities, individual cities, and again, we do that in two counties because of who we are and where we are. We have separate growth targets for each portion. Those are negotiated between the cities and the counties. So the State Office of Financial Management, OFM, does population forecasts by county. They provide those to the counties, and then the counties work with the cities to allocate those targets. to allocate those targets to the individual jurisdictions. So we have a certain amount that we would, we would take as part of that process. The last time we did that, we had 2040 was in place. It had been for a few years. So we were trying to match those allocations up as best we could with our designations as metropolitan, core, large, and smaller cities. It wasn't perfect, but we were trying to move in that direction. So I suspect this time, we'll try to match these percentages much more closely in terms of allocating those. So based on that, Bruce ran some quick and dirty numbers for me. So I want to stress as clearly as I can, with as many disclaimers as I can, that these are really just very rough estimates based on some crude assumptions at this point. If we look at what our share was previously and apply that and make some other assumptions about how this might play out in the different scenarios, you can see under Snohomish and King County, what we estimate those would be, how much of that might come to Bothell in terms of a growth allocation. Now, I would also stress here, these are not our growth targets because those are going to be set with the counties based on the OFM numbers. But they should be in the ballpark, at least, in terms of what we're talking about there. On the right-hand side, I'm showing you what our current target is. These are our adopted targets in our comprehensive plan. So you can see by 2035, which is the 20-year horizon for our current plan, we're looking at a total population of around 55,000. If you, and we're assuming at this point that this would be additive. So if you add the second to the right column, you can see we're getting up to, you know, anywhere from 70,000 to 80,000 population in the city under the different scenarios. What I find most interesting about this is if you look at the difference between those core city allocations under the different scenarios, that's sort of the middle column there, you see more of a difference, in some cases, a more dramatic difference between the three alternatives. So under the stay of the course, core cities would get a significant amount of that growth. Metropolitan cities would get a larger percentage. I think it was 38% for the metropolitan cities and 28% or 27% for the core cities. Big number in King County, obviously, so we'd get a share of that, although it might be a smaller proportional share because there are 10 core cities in King County that would be dividing that up versus only two core cities in Snohomish County. And because we're only a portion in Snohomish County, we sort of split that. I think last time, we got about 42% and 58% went to Linwood, which is the other core city. So I don't want to get too bogged down in numbers because I'll start to confuse myself, but that's generally what are, some of our assumptions are based on. But you can see there's a significant difference between that and the reset urban growth. And a lot of that in Snohomish County in particular, I think, has to do with the fact that we have some of those high-capacity transit stations in the urban unincorporated area. So they'd probably be looking at shifting some of the growth to those areas as well. Growth alternative, some of the impacts that are common to all of the alternatives. You can see there about drive times and distances, time spent stuck in traffic. That's going to go up regardless. It's just a question of to what degree. Transit ridership is going to more than double. More so certainly under the focus on transit, the alternative two. Air quality will improve, greenhouse gas emissions will be reduced. Those are one of the goals of all of the alternatives. All require about 830,000 new, I think that was supposed to say, housing units. And then redevelopment, increase the threats of displacement. So again, what we were talking about earlier with, you know, as more growth pressure comes in, that's going to push some lower-income people out. Yes?
How does the reset option reduce greenhouse gas emissions if you're moving people away from transit into rural areas?
So I think that's coming up here. It's a reduction, it's a reduction over what we have today, but it's not as great a reduction as it would be if we did the other alternatives. So these are just a few of the factors that they've looked at in the analysis. If you look at the vehicle delay, so they look at each of the three alternatives. If it's green, it's an improvement. If it's red, it's not as big of an improvement. And these are in comparison to the stay of the course. So for example, under vehicle delay, right now it's 31 hours. So under transit focus, that goes down to 29 hours. So it shows the arrow, meaning it goes down, but that's a good thing because it's green. And then in the reset urban growth, it goes up to 32 hours and that's a negative. So red is negative, the green is positive. The greenhouse gas, under stay of the course, we're at 41,000 tons per day. That goes down under transit-focused. It goes up slightly under the reset. But again, that's an improvement over, of where we are today. Because 2040 is an improvement over where we are today. So if that helps to answer your question.
So Michael, that vehicle delay, what is that, the 31 hours, over what period of time? Or is it, I guess?
I'm not sure. I'm trying to remember now. I've looked through that part of it and I don't recall exactly what that was.
Okay.
I don't know if it, I think it's, it may be an average vehicle delay on the freeway system. I'm not sure. Sorry. I can look into that. So these are some of the others. These are not all the ones, but just to give you an example. So moderate-density housing, this is that missing middle that we often talk about. This shows how much of that would be in the moderate density. And there's stay of the course, so looking at 15%, goes up under the transit-focused and goes down under the reset option. Displacement, elevated risk under 2040, goes up more so under the transit-focused, down under the reset because we're spreading things out a little bit more. And then the jobs-housing balance, that's one of the basic tenants of vision all along. So improves, and again, 2040 is looking at its improvement over existing conditions. And then the other two would actually be an improvement over that as well. So some of the key themes that are coming out of the policy work that they're doing, compact walkable places, we talked about that a lot. Leveraging our transportation investments. Again, the second alternative is really much more about that. So it gets much more leverage out of that. Promoting affordable housing in all cases, open space and farmland preservation, social equity and displacement. So that's part of the analysis that they're looking at. And then also addressing climate change. So again, here's the process when the comments are due. And I will leave it at that and try to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. And if you have questions, just go ahead and feel free to ask. This is a study session, so it's real informal.
Quick question. Have they taken into consideration infrastructure, water, sewer, that kind of stuff with the?
That is part of the analysis, yes. They look at the availability of those. And I believe, I don't remember the specifics of it, but I think that the transit-focused is a positive in terms of impact because it's making more efficient use of the existing infrastructure. And then the reset is a decrease of efficiency because it would require more expansion of the system over the 2040 plan.
Any consideration of financing? Counties in particular have challenges with revenue for unincorporated areas. They tend to lose the revenue-generating areas to incorporation and then are left with low-density, high-cost areas without the revenues.
And I don't recall seeing anything in there that looks at the finances. Typically, that's not part of an EIS.
Yeah, I understood not part of an EIS, but part of a vision plan like this, it seems like it might be. The reset seems like would have some challenges.
And that could be a comment that we would make. Again, I haven't gone through everything in the document yet and I haven't gotten through the appendices either, so there may be some more in there. But that's a good comment. I will add that.
One just general comment. Seems like we hear a lot of complaints about growth being thrown at metropolitan areas or core cities, like specifically Seattle. It's constrained by a lot of, a large, single-family area spread across the city and very small areas to do multifamily. I mean, it's grown in the last 10 years. Do you see that as an issue with Bothell moving forward too? It seems like we've had a lot of density downtown. We're looking at Canyon Park as our potential next area to dump some density, some concentrated density. Besides that, where's our 2050 holding area where you guys see, I don't know, an influx of higher-density building?
That's, that's the $64,000 question. That, I think, will be probably one of our big challenges when we do the next update, is looking at, once we get those growth targets and getting a better handle on just how much additional growth we need to accommodate is where it would make sense to do that and in what form. As Commissioner Kiranen mentioned before, we'd be looking at increased density, and that's going to be true across the region. This is not unique to Bothell. It's, you know, it's true and not just the core cities either. So I prefer not to try to pinpoint anything right now, but I think we probably will have to look outside of downtown and Canyon Park for some, some additional capacity beyond those two areas and as well as increasing the capacity of those two areas. Canyon Park is our major capacity area for our growth targets for Snohomish County. Likewise, downtown serves that purpose, that function for us in King County. So we already have quite a bit of capacity in our downtown still. Somewhat in Canyon Park, but that's one of the reasons we're doing that sub-area plan update, to look at what our capacity is there and how we can increase that. I think, I'll go out on a little bit of a limb here. I think one of the areas that we would look at within the Canyon Park sub-area in particular, outside of the park itself, would be that area west of the freeway, around the 228th, 527 intersection. There's quite a bit of commercial development there with a lot of parking area. That may offer some opportunities for introducing some transit-oriented development because it will be across the freeway from a high-capacity transit stop. We're going to have three BRT lines in Bothell, you know, over the next five years or so. So I think that's probably one area that, at least I've kind of looked at and said, I think we're going to need to take a closer look at that when we do our 23 comp plan update.
Sure. Okay. Thanks. That was a great.
If you have other suggested areas?
None that I know of, or they'd be buying lots of land. One other, just a follow-up question. So I think change and projections are difficult on a city. So I think back to when we were looking at the downtown plan, there was quite a contentious debate about the height of the buildings downtown and I think we lost a floor overall. Do you think we can be more aggressive or as aggressive as we need to be in Canyon Park in order to kind of offset the 1.8 million people that are coming to our general area in the next 25 years, 30 years?
More aggressive than downtown, you mean, or?
No, just, I mean, appropriate for the future that we know is coming. I mean, not planning it for today's needs to meet 2025, but for our needs to meet 2050. I mean, a little bit more long-term planning.
Good point. And I think the short answer is yes, we're looking at that in the context of future growth beyond what our current capacity needs are. Keep in mind that the growth targets we get in the next update we do will only take us through 2043 because there will be more updates to vision before we get to 2050. There'll be more updates to our comprehensive plan and our growth targets before we get, even before we get to 2030. Probably around 2030 is when the next one would be due, 2031, I think, is that every eight years?
Yeah, yes.
So this is an iterative process. We're always looking at least 20 years into the future. This is forcing us to look a little bit further out in terms of what that growth might be. But we won't get a growth target for 2050, per se. We'll get what core cities should do and that will influence what we look at as far as our short-term growth target for 2043.
Just to expand a little bit on that. In downtown, the, we really only lost a floor around the periphery, the transition zones. The core area, we reduced the height initially, but kept the same number of floors. And that was largely happened because there's so many established neighborhoods right up against the downtown. Canyon Park's a different story and doesn't have that. So I wouldn't expect we'd get that kind of pushback. The pushback we're more likely to get is the business area is not wanting, you know, wanting to preserve room for business expansion and, as opposed to residential expansion, so.
And keep in mind, right now, in the Canyon Park area, the RAC zoning there has no density limit. It's really limited more by the building height and some of the setbacks and things like that. So we'll be revisiting that. We also had, I also want to mention, relative to the downtown, we've had some discussions with the city council about the city-owned properties and their interest in providing additional affordable housing. One of the ways that we can do that is by offering an increase in the height of our city-owned, of buildings on those city-owned properties in exchange for affordable housing. And that was a question that was posed to the council is whether they would consider that because we do have the height limit downtown. And I would say there was consensus around, yes, that there was a willingness to do that, at least for affordable housing. We didn't pose it in terms of increasing overall capacity, but that's something that, you know, we would probably be having more of a discussion of that with the council when we get to that point on the comp plan. So I would just note on the slide, Paul Ingram is the contact person at PSRC. And there's also the website up there at the top of the screen if you'd like to review the documents and get more information on that.
Just one last question. And I'll probably contact Mr. Ingram. But based on the three options you presented, do you have a feeling on which would be the preferred method, staying the course, the HCT or the reset?
I think from the city's standpoint, given what we have in our comprehensive plan right now, we're looking at, we're more consistent with options one and two. What that would mean for us, that's part of the discussion we'll have with the council next week is, you know, I think the direction that I've been hearing, at least from PSRC and from other jurisdictions I've talked to, is more towards alternative two, which is that transit-focused alternative. And the main reason for that is just leveraging as much as we can out of the transit investment that we're making in the region, really making the most of that, that significant investment. And it really gets at a lot of things that we've talked about here in Bothell as well. Even though we don't have light rail, we are going to have BRT. And we have, we already talked about transit-oriented development. So that's really one of the key components of that, that alternative. So I suspect that may be where, you know, where we focus more of our comments.
I have a brief question about annexation as a function of bringing services together and reducing impact on climate. There used to be a program when, you know, a lot of the King County annexations were occurring that provided tax benefits for cities to provide that service. Is that something that would be part of this sort of process in Vision 2050?
That's a great question because I did not talk about our urban growth area. The numbers that I was showing you were really within our existing city limits. If we add the urban growth area to that, the numbers go up significantly. And that's not just in terms of what's there now, but as well as the future growth because those will also get a growth target. But to directly answer your question, I don't think that this, that the update looks at that specifically. There's a recognition that there's a lot of urban unincorporated area that will ultimately be part of a city. But as far as the annexation process or incentives for that, I don't believe that this looks at it. There may be some policies related to that, but I don't think the analysis looks at that.
There's more of a preference for those to remain as unincorporated areas until there's consensus in the community to incorporate, or?
A preference by whom?
By the people that live in those areas.
That's, my experience, that's generally true. People prefer the status quo. Over time, that usually results in a decrease in service by counties. Getting back to Commissioner Kiranen's point that they don't have the tax base to support those areas, to provide the same level of urban services. And one of the tenants of the Growth Management Act is urban areas. And one of the tenets of the Growth Management Act is urban areas should be in cities, because cities are the best provider of urban services. Counties are really not supposed to be providing urban services. I know in Snohomish County, you know, what I hear is they would like to see those areas annexed so that they're not having to provide those services. We know the history in Bothell, you know, we've attempted that until the annexation laws change or until the service levels get to a point where the cities are a clear, better alternative, then I'm not sure that we'll see much change in our boundaries.
Thanks.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Probably more than you wanted.
Are you able to flip back a few? The first slide that you showed that showed the population growth in Bothell, just before that, this slide here, the percentage of distribution of population for each one adds up to 100%, but it seems to me that core cities and HCT communities and cities and towns would overlap a little bit. So how did they delineate between, for example, core cities and HCT communities?
That's a great question. I don't know if I have a full answer for you. My assumption is that they do not overlap. So if they're a core city, then they are in the core city line. If they are a city, notice this doesn't have large cities and smaller cities. So if they're a large city or a smaller city that has an HCT, I'm sorry, if they're an HCT community, then they fall into that category. And I think the cities and towns, then, are all of the other incorporated areas that don't have high-capacity transit and don't fall into the core city or metro city. So I don't think there's an overlap there.
So Bothell being a core city wouldn't be included in the HCT communities?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah. And there's a little bit, and that's one of the comments that I've noticed as I've been going through this, is then that doesn't necessarily recognize the level of high-capacity transit service of individual cities like Bothell that are going to have three BRT lines. Because when that was originally set up, they talked about high-capacity transit being defined as light rail, bus rapid transit, ferries, commuter rail, and streetcars, I think, are the ones. So that was to capture some of the outlying areas like the Kitsap communities that have, you know, have a foot ferry. But I don't think it really considered all of the communities that are going to have those BRT stations to the same degree.
So is an HCT community defined as a given radius around a transit stop?
Yeah, typically, they look at a half-mile around light rail or bus rapid transit.
As currently in the system plans?
In the system plans, correct. It's not just what's there.
Yeah, not currently existing, but in the current plans.
Yes, it's in an adopted, an approved plan, so anything in ST3 would be included in this. And that's what picks up those two stations along Highway 99 in Snohomish County that are in the unincorporated areas.
Okay, thank you.
So I do have a couple of other questions, but piggybacking on Commissioner Kiranen's question about approved plans, because as we know, Metro and Sound Transit have, you know, they have system plans for bus service, and they're not necessarily all funded. For example, all of the rapid ride lines for Metro are in there, I think it's a 2030 or 2040 plan, but they're not funded. And you use the example of ST3, which is funded. Would they include the high-capacity transit corridors in the plans or just the plans that are funded?
I'll have to check on that. I think it's just the ones that are funded. Because remember, we had this discussion at Regional Staff Committee, but I'm not positive about that. Somebody look into that.
Okay. And then just as far as the analysis, I think these are really, it's really great to see the difference between the three plans. I would have concerns about the reset urban growth, but I also have a little bit of concerns about the state-of-the-course and transit-focused and your comment about counties looking at kind of expanding the growth within the urban growth boundary. The, I think, Malby example, Cathcart example you gave was one, but, I mean, it's not going to shock anybody up here that I think that focusing the growth around the, you know, $60, $70 billion that we're already investing in transit in this region makes more sense than even staying the course, especially with the state legislature not having a whole lot of appetite for highway capacity expansion. I mean, even what's on the table right now, which isn't even close to being funded, doesn't get at what would be needed if we wanted to go back and start planning around highways. So that's my feedback on that. The other question I have is, is there anything about, thoughts about bicycle infrastructure in cities that have, you know, bike highways, such as the Eastside Rail Quarter, that's going to be opening between Renton and Woodinville and then some Amishburg trails?
I know they've looked at non-motorized as part of that transportation network and helping to reduce the vehicle miles and all of that. I don't recall to what degree the analysis looks at that or what all they include in that, what plans they include in that, but I can take another look at that as well. But I do know that it's a consideration.
And then, sorry, the last question related to that, but, you know, the first mile, last mile, you know, we talked about the half-mile between, when Commissioner Kiranen was asking, I think he said a half-mile within the HCT would be HCT, but do we look at that whole mile as far as walkability from neighborhoods where there may not be sidewalks, there may not be safe paths to walk, or is that too far in the weeds?
I think that's a level of detail that they don't get into. I think their assumption is that at some point, pardon me, at some point, those will have that accessibility and walkability and the other amenities that you want to have around the TOD.
That would get into the city planning part, once the allocation's.
That's the local implementation.
All right. Well, thanks, everybody, for letting me talk that much. Appreciate it.
Questions?
Is there a short explanation for the new column on this slide, the adjusted transit focus?
I don't have one, because I, this came from Snohomish County, and I don't, I don't recall.
All right, thanks.
I'm still getting up to speed on all of this stuff as well.
Great. Well, thank you very much for that presentation, Michael. That was fantastic, and for the questions. So with that, I guess we'll, are you going to continue on and give us the 2019 Planning Docket briefing, also a study session? So if you have questions while Michael's giving his presentation, just feel free to chime in.
This one I know a little bit more about, so hopefully I can answer your questions better. So we came to you back in January, I believe, January, early February, with the proposed docket at that time, and we went to the city council in February for their approval. And I just wanted to give you a quick update on the discussion that we got from the council, as well as talk about what that means for the work program for the Planning Commission over the course of the year. So just a real quick review of the docket. It's a requirement of GMA. We actually take that beyond GMA's requirement, and we use this as our work program. So it's not just those things that require a comp plan or code amendment, it's other things that are related to that. The council had reviewed and prioritized and gave us some direction. I'm not going to go through this, but these are the items that we either completed from the 2018 docket. We either completed these or at least started these during 2018, so quite a bit of work. And you were involved in the vast majority of that. These are the things that we did not get to. For this year's docket, the 2019, we calculated the number of hours that were available and categorized them according to whether we were required to do them by the state or federal government, those that supported a council goal, or things that were previously initiated. So you can see, those are the recommended ones for 2019, and the total hours for that was a little less than 2,200 hours out of, so that's basically the time available with Bruce and Dave's time. Mine doesn't count. I don't really provide a whole lot of effort to their work on that. So the estimated hours, you can see, is just graphically shown there on the, shown there on the right. These are the 2019 docket items, and again, you saw these, I'm not going to go through them in great detail. I can certainly elaborate on any if you want me to, but these are five that are mandated either by state or federal. Most of them you're familiar with. These are two that are related to council goals, specifically affordable housing and Canyon Park under economic development. And those are both well underway, but there's a lot more work to do on those, and you're involved in all of those as well. These are some process improvements that we had recommended to the council. The first A through H, whatever, however many that is, are ones we had recommended for 2019. The others, we proposed deferring. And we have the hours on the far right are estimated staff hours to do that work. And then these are some additional, either previously initiated by council or new ones that we were proposing for the 2019 docket. And you can see, we get to the 2,180 hours at the end of that list. So that's not everything, but those are the ones that we said we could do with the hours that we think we have available, the resources that we have, to either finish or at least begin these in 2019. I would also note on number 10, there is, there are no hours estimated there, because we left that as just a placeholder for anything that might come up related to some of the downtown city-owned properties. We know there's probably going to be something, we just don't know what that is or how many hours, but if you look at the total we have available, it adds up to roughly 70 hours that we would have available for that task. So these are some, these are most, not all of the ones that we would, we recommended deferring to at least 2020, that we would not be able to start this year. And again, you saw these before. The council did, they made two changes. They removed one item that we had recommended they take off, and that was the safe injection site task. And the reason for that was, under the advice of the City Attorney's Office, the way that King County adopted that ordinance, I guess, about safe injection sites, is that they would come to the city and ask for the city's approval before they would cite anything within a city. So basically, we didn't need to do anything to preclude those. The safeguard is there, so that was the recommendation that the council removed that from the docket, which they did. The other change was on number 18, we had that as, that was an item that came from the Shoreline Board, and we had recommended that that be deferred until we do the major update of the shorelines, which was due, I think, in 2025. That was just what we had put out there for the council's consideration. They said they'd like to consider that sooner than that, so they moved it up in the order and put a proposed timing of 2020 on there. So those are the only two changes that the council made from what you saw back in February.
One quick question on a deferral, number 14 was the signs. Are we missing a deadline? Or I can't remember when we had to have that wrapped up.
Yeah, there's not a deadline per se, but our code, our sign code right now is not in alignment with the Supreme Court case, the Gilbert case, that really affected a lot of municipal sign codes. So that was talked about, I think we talked about that here at the commission, we also talked about it at the city council. And it's close to that line, because we see it as important and a high priority, but that was one of the trade-offs we were asking the council to consider. You know, if we can move that up, but we'd have to move something else then down. And they opted to keep things pretty much in the order that they are. Now, that's not to say that we couldn't get to it sooner if something else gets deferred because of things beyond our control, or, you know, we were able to get something done sooner than what we think. But we do recognize it's an important thing to get done, because right now, we pretty much cannot enforce our sign code. So we want to fix that, and we're going to try to get, at least get started on it this year if we can.
Follow-up question on that, I think you just answered about enforcement. Is that part of the reason we're seeing just hundreds of A-Board signs all over the city? That the city can't, it would be all-or-nothing type of enforcement?
We cannot regulate the content of signs.
So you could tell people that they're not allowed at all?
We could prohibit them entirely, but right now, our code allows for A-frame signs for restaurants, within so many feet of a restaurant, and I think it's just in downtown.
Actually, we've removed the special treatment for restaurants partly because of this issue. So I think there are enforcement actions we can take, but not with regard to content.
Yeah, and our city attorney has advised us that the way our code is written right now, we really can't, because it's written in such a way that we regulate the, not the type of sign so much as the, oh, how can I describe this? Well, let's go back to the restaurant example. I thought we still allowed them, but apparently that's changed. But if, when we did allow those just for restaurants, because it was the content of the sign referring to restaurants, eateries, those kinds of things, then we're regulating the content of the sign, because we wouldn't allow a salon to have an A-frame sign because it says salon on the sign. So that puts us out of compliance with the Gilbert case. So we really need to take away anything in our code that has to do with the content, which has always been the case, but when it gets to free speech, this goes a little bit further. So that's part of the problem and why we're just not able to enforce right now.
Thanks.
So, different topic earlier this evening, we talked about additional work coming as FEMA and DOE revise their guidance. Is that included in these estimates?
I believe it is, or it's implied. There are certain things in here that we know we're going to have to do some additional work on, but those may also be situations, depending on the feedback that we get, we may look at that and say, this goes beyond what we have available to do this year, and we may have to defer those. Sometimes we have to make that call as we get more information about it.
Thank you.
So those are all of the ones that we took to the council, again, two minor changes on those, and they approved it. So what does that mean for the staff and the Planning Commission in terms of our work program for this year? So we've tried to put together, as best we can, our estimate of when these items would be coming to the Planning Commission and to the city council. We also tried to be as colorful as possible. So you can see some of the things that are already come before you, like the critical areas update you saw this evening, the small cell wireless that we've already worked through. We have critical areas, I'm sorry, the Shoreline Master Program update that's not coming to the Planning Commission, but we're showing all of the things that are on the docket that involve the staff, and in most cases involve the Planning Commission and the city council. That one is just going to go to the city council. We also show on here the buildable lands report. This is another one of those components I was talking about earlier that goes along with the Vision 2050, the growth targets, the countywide planning policies. We have to have our buildable lands report information updated. The next report is due, I believe it's June of 2021. And again, we have two separate reports to do because we're in two counties. So we're currently working with King County. They are actually doing theirs a year earlier, so they're already underway. And then Snohomish County is underway, but they're not planning to get done as soon as King County is. So that's, there's nothing in there that's going to involve the Planning Commission directly. So you'll see there's no action for you in that, but we want to make you aware of it, because that will affect some of the other things that we're doing. And at some time, I'm sure we'll bring you a briefing just to kind of let you know where, how that's looking in terms of our existing capacity and efficiency of our development. Canyon Park, as you know, we're showing several things on there. We're going to be starting to come to the commission with more information on that. That's moving ahead pretty quickly. Bruce is going to brief you on that. I believe it's at the next meeting, I think we have on the agenda, starting the next meeting and running into May. Housing strategy implementation, we're not sure yet if we're going to start that or some of the downtown code amendments in the next month, but one of those will be coming to you within a couple of months. Housekeeping code amendments, that was the A-through-H list that you saw. So Bruce is getting started on those. I think that's also going to start coming to you, I think, with an initial briefing at least in May, but the action would be in June. City-owned parcels, that's the one I said is a placeholder. We don't know yet what we're going to need, what we may or may not need to do with that. We've got the private code amendment regarding nursing and rehabilitation. We've got the private code amendment regarding nursing and rehabilitation facilities. And then the school impact fee collection, the district has asked that the city collect the school impact fees. I confirm they are still interested in us doing that. We need to initiate an amendment process with them, but we see that coming later on in the year. There's not the same urgency, at least for the city, there is not. There may be for the school district, but in terms of laying out all of the different things that we're working on, we saw that one is coming a little bit later in the year. And again, this is an estimate. These things, as you know, often do and, and will change, but we at least wanted to get a sense of when we might be able to time these, so that we're, we're spreading it out over the course of the year and, and have a, a better flow of work for the staff and for the commission. So if you have any questions on any of this?
I don't know, I don't have any questions. Could you keep?
Just a brief one. I thought parking was coming back to us as the council handling, like, parking amendments and code?
Specific for the downtown parking study?
Yeah.
So that was not funded in the budget for this year. So right now, we're not, we're not showing that on the docket. I think it's still out there, but not in this year's. Did you want to add anything to that, Dave?
I don't think it was also listed in 2020, but there is at least some interest in, in trying to get some funding to move forward on that.
That may be something that we look at in the, the ADU amendments. I think that might come up in that. There's, I should also mention, particularly under the housing part of this, and it may affect downtown code amendments, but probably more so the, the housing strategy implementation and some of the housekeeping that we're doing as well. The legislation right now that's going through the, the chambers in Olympia could have some significant implications for our work program. There's some minimum density bills that are, look like they're going to pass in some form that would require us to take certain actions to increase density in the city if we haven't done them already. We're looking at to see how much of that we think we've, we've already done, so we might be okay. There's also some things going through on accessory dwelling units that would restrict, that would limit what we could, what we could regulate in terms of accessory dwelling units. Really trying to, to open it up for, for more, but we're also looking at that. So those may also come into play as we're looking at some of these other amendments. We'll have to factor those in.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that briefing, both of us. Very well done. Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
No old business today, and with that, looks like you have some staff reports.
Yeah, I just did want to say, continuing our effort to provide some coordination between Planning Commission and Shoreline Board, particularly with regard to the, these critical areas, code amendments, and the related ones that the Shoreline Board, that are in the Shoreline Management Code, I would like to invite Planning Commission to have one to three representatives attend the Shoreline Board hearing on next Monday. You know, Chair Fleet attended the open house on March 11th, and so, we have not advertised it as a joint meeting, so we want to make sure that we don't have a quorum.
Okay, great. And if they know that they will or won't be there, want to, or? No, no, no.
I will not be there.
I'm out of town.
Okay, I'll probably try to attend. It looks like it'll just be me.
Okay.
Okay, great.
I have just a couple of quick items. So next Tuesday night, Dave and I are doing a follow-up study session with council. We had a workshop with them back in January on the city-owned properties in downtown and trying to refine the vision for those, what they would like to see, not see. And one of the things that, that we didn't get quite as much feedback on as we would have liked, had to do with the design of those buildings. One of the things we heard, particularly the, the gateway, what we're calling the gateway parcels at the corner of Bothell Way and 522, or if you know them by the letters D, E, F, and G. So next Tuesday, we're doing what we call a visual preference survey with the City Council, and the public is also invited to, to take a look at that, if any of you are interested in, in attending and seeing that. We're going to be showing them a series of images of different types of, of buildings. So we'll be looking at things like design, materials, architecture, landscaping, signage, Balkan scale, I think those are the main ones that we're, that we're going to look at.
Public spaces.
Public spaces. And just get their, the, the way the, the survey works is, you show it for just a few seconds, you get a gut reaction, they just score it. We're going to have a very simple scoring system, so we're going to go through that, and then we'll come back and we'll ask them what their individual scores were on those and, but also why. What is it they liked or didn't like? Because one of the things we heard, the theme that we got from the council last time, was they want some high-quality design, they want it to be a head turner, you know, they want it to be really appealing and attractive. Not unusual, they couldn't quite tell us what that looked like. You know, it's one of those, you know it when you see it, so we're going to try to show them enough examples that they can, we can get a better sense of what it is they see as, as high-quality design.
So, did you say this is for the community to, or mostly just for the council, or?
It's for the council. We'll, we'll have some forms for the community to fill out at the same time as we're doing that, but the discussion will really be with the council. Will be interesting to see what, what the community has to say as well, but we're, we're really going to be talking with the council directly about this.
Okay.
And it'll be in a study session environment.
A study session environment, okay.
Yeah, we're also going to, I'll also be doing the briefing on Vision 2050. And then the other thing I wanted to let you know about is, former board and commission members are going to be recognized and thanked by the council at the April 16th meeting. So council member, I'm sorry, former Commissioner Cecil has been notified and, and has indicated that he will be there, if any of you want to attend, and we'll make sure he gets his card. We didn't say from any cake, but we'll make sure he gets his card to, you know, add your thanks to him personally when, when he's there. Just wanted to let you know about that.
Okay. Great.
And thanks again for those of you who've sent any dates that you're not going to be available. If, if any others know some dates you're not going to be here, again, please let us know ahead of time, so that if we see we're going to have a quorum issue or potentially a quorum issue, we can deal with it sooner rather than later. So, thanks again.
I had a, one quick question. You had mentioned, I had some August dates, family travel, summer breaks, that kind of thing. You had mentioned that August traditionally is a quiet month.
Correct.
Are there any other times of the year that, that takes place?
December, sometimes, well, I, I can't speak to the past.
Well, December.
Last year, we had one meeting in December, maybe an early meeting in December, but we probably wouldn't have a, a second meeting in December unless we really needed to with, you know, something on deadline, but.
Thank you.
Great. Reports from members? I just want to say, for, that was, to kind of echo what Michael said, that was fantastic, getting back to us, and that made it so much easier, and it's really great to have all seven of us up here tonight. It's awesome. That hasn't happened for a while. And I just kind of want, I guess, want to recognize Carsten again, Carsten Kerd, and I believe you come with a geotechnical background, is that right?
I have experience working with a geotechnical engineer. I'm not licensed yet in Washington as a geologist, but I'm working towards it, so.
Okay, great. Well, welcome. Do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I'm really excited to work with you all and add my voice and listen to the community members. I'm really excited to serve, so thanks for having me.
That's great to have you.
So used to seeing him sitting out here, it's.
I know.
It's fun to see him sitting up there now.
He's actually been here for a long time.
Yeah.
So he's up in the diet. Let's see here. Okay, with that, entertain a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Actually, I have a.
Oh.
Can I, sorry about that. No, I have a brief question for you, and maybe Michael as well. Do we do elections now, because we now have new members, or is that, and, not tonight, but near term?
We almost put that on the agenda, and then we, we actually read the bylaws, and we, we do them every two years.
Every two years, yeah.
So we did it, we did it last year. So yes, we, we, same thoughts, but thank you for asking.
Yeah.
You know, unless, unless you're planning a coup of some kind, and then we can.
So, no.
You can start.
I remember one.
Campaigning for 2020, like with everybody else.
So there's, there's a motion.
I second that motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.
So geologists have a process, well, engineering, there's engineering training, and then the professional engineers.
I had to do.